Oh, I just went to milk things today, so.
All right, I have six o'clock. I am calling the village board meeting of March twenty second to order roll call, please.
Trustee Kettlebaiter? Trustee Brochus?
Here.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Here.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yeah.
Trustee Francois?
She's not here today. She did an email earlier that she wasn't coming.
Okay, trustee Xander?
Here.
And President Langfeld?
Here. Stand for president. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all. All right, public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. We'll observe the time on the three minutes. Our board, village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issues that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Do we have anybody that would like to speak?
We did not have a any registered public comment, but I do have an email here from trustee Sarah.
You want to do that during the trustee report?
I can do that.
I think that would be more important. She's still a trustee. All right, we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are routine procedural decisions and the decisions that are likely to be non-opportunational upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business or future need. Bill?
I'd like to pull off ten and fourteen.
Any others? I have a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda for the items that are left on the agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda without ten and fourteen included. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All whole thing. All right, village report. From President, I just have one. This is Lori and Sarah's last village board meeting. I want to personally, as a representative of the community, thank you both for the service to the village board. I, we all appreciate your input and hard work that you've done on any issues related to the village. So, thank you very much, and we appreciate your time with us. That is all I have. Vice President?
Just that the lines are gonna probably do line wagon rather than the garage sale. It's great to do on Saturday weekend. They're gonna do, it's not garage sales through them, but they are gonna put up the wagons like I heard. I do know a lot of people that want to have garage sales that weekend, and they can make it fresh. So let me tell you why, but there's nothing officially on the agenda for now. That's it.
All right, we'll go to other proceeds. I'd like Sarah, does anyone else want to be then Bill?
Okay, so the email from Sarah, I'm just gonna go ahead and read it here. Please extend my sincere gratitude to the entire board for the opportunity to work collaboratively with them over the last four years. It has been a tremendous honor to be an elected official for the village of Cross Plains. For a small village, we accomplish big things. We host a uniquely beautiful landscape and natural resources here, and I pledge to maintain a friendship to the preservation of these valuable resources and promote recognition of Cross Plains as a true gem in the county. I am particularly impressed by the Cross Plains Department Recreation Department, including the on-kerel uncertainties we have in our small, small community. I wish to thank Mike Exon and his minister for that first slash and slash. It is no less than amazing that the village department offers to its residents, considering the population size. There's my hope that my time with the board has served the community favorably. I am humbled by the work you do, Bill, and I'm so grateful for the opportunity to pay up work of few years' staff in my whole just these goals.
Okay, Bill?
Oh, just FYI from the library is that their phone system is on its, its last leg, kind of limping along. It's completely out of, out of life. It's, they, you know, they're, they're keeping it together barely, so they're looking at getting a new phone system. Oh, Sam has done quite a bit of research to try and find that. The money's gonna come out of oh, the library, oh, not the general fund, but the fund balance, yep. And there's fifty-six thousand dollars or so in the fund balance, so it was plenty. She's looking at maybe ten, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars for a new phone system. One thing I recommended was that the village is, you know, their, our phone system is also old and antiquated, and it may be a good idea to now, oh, to look at both the library and the village at the same time to kind of reduce economies of scale. If, you know, if that's something that we're interested in looking at, so. Oh, but, but right now, while she's, kind of she's on her own for the library boards on their own, getting this put together, but I'd like to see them at least investigate with the village to see, you know, if, if it makes sense.
All right, we'll go to the administrator. Bill?
Okay, first update we have here in regards to the Meyer litigation, this was resulting from a slip and fall in the village. They filed a claim for the village at the September twenty twenty meeting. The village board denied that claim, and so it's continued on into litigation. And we're going to that process here. We did receive, so according to the website up here, we did receive the letter back from the U.S. Economic Development Administration in regards to our grant for storm floodwater mitigation. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant. The three reasons why we did not receive it, one was that the project location of the community voted to other parts of the six-state region, that's not significantly economically distressed. That's something that we can't change. Our application does not persuasively demonstrate that the proposed project will fully mitigate future flooding events. And then third, the property needed for the project is not in the evidence control. And so those were things that they based their review on, and will continue to look for other opportunities for. Questions on that?
All right, thank you, Bill. Other reports, Gary?
Hello?
Hello?
I just wanted to let you know that the replacement skid steer that was in the capital improvement plan for this year, I have ordered it. Needed to order it due to production issues. We're hoping to see it in September, which is a little later than I really like, but I don't have a choice. The cost was under the the approved amount, so, yeah, I just want to let you know that that happened.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, police chief?
Low there. These are just cleaner copies of what we already have. Just look a little newer for me to keep. I won't belabor this too long. It is something that I thought of right away when I took over as the chief of police, was to have an annual report. I noticed that the village was not receiving an annual report, and I think it's very important that the police department, especially in the times that we live in now, that we're transparent and that we're very, that we're held accountable. So the report is of a basic nature. My plans are to obviously increase it and make it better every year that I'm here. So this is a very basic report, just kind of gives you a little bit of information with regards to our department, the future of the department, what, what we're headed to, you know, goals and things like that, and then it also provides you with a our calls for service, which you can see kind of in the middle of the, of the, of the report. So basically, I just, you guys had this already ahead of time. I, I think I sent it to Bill well, well in advance. The copy that you have is just, just a nicer, cleaner copy. That's kind of my plan, is to give you a cleaner copy during the meetings and then, and prepare these to be presented shortly after the turn of the year, you know, October here, April, something like that, so. As you can see, I highlighted some of the issues that we, that we seen. One of the, obviously, some of the bigger things is that are just our call volume has gone, gone way up. We've seen about a thirty-eight percent increase in calls. It's hard to tell, you know, what that means. Does that just mean that we have a lot more people home? And, and so we have more people, so we have more complaints. I, I think we'll, we'll see once, once we start getting back a little bit back to normal, maybe we'll, we'll see the numbers go backwards a little bit. I'm not sure, but this is the numbers, so, I mean, they're, they're pulled right out of our, out of our database at the police department, out of our record management system, and so that's what we have. I, I think the, the highlight points would be, you know, things like our nine-one-one disconnect. That's the, the first one you see there. It's gone quite a bit, so we, we're getting a lot more nine-one-one calls. Disconnect calls are not actual emergency calls, but somebody has accidentally called. We're seeing a, a lot more property checks, a lot more, you know, suspicious activity, a lot more people around, so a lot more eyes, a lot more information being shared. One of the things that you will see that's quite a, a, a big jump is over by our, our traffic. We've increased traffic enforcement at a very high level. Basically, I receive a lot of complaints with regards to traffic complaints, people running through stop signs, speeding. So I've really asked the staff to step up their enforcement, and they have. We, from last year, we had, they had ninety-four traffic stops. This year, they had two-hundred-and-sixty-nine, so there's been quite an increase in traffic and trying to slow people down, trying to get people to just mind their Ps and Qs. So unless you have any other, I don't want to belabor this. I mean, it's all pretty much black and white. Unless you have any questions, it's pretty much there.
There, Bill?
Hey, chief, um, just curious, I know you said you had an increased thirty-eight percent increase in calling. Dogs has always been kind of high on the list for police calls. Is that still a problem within the village?
Dogs?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had an increase in dog calls. The, the thing that we had increase on was, was actually dog bites. We went from next to maybe one to, to seven, so that's a pretty big increase when you, but we have a lot more people walking dogs, a lot of dogs that aren't maybe used to being out. In the last eight months, though, we haven't had any dog bites. So it was all right away, right when the dog started, that people started to come out with the dog. We've had an increase also in, in ordinance violations with regards to dog waste, things like that. Staff has increased patrol. You know, if we're driving by, you don't, you don't necessarily, you're not necessarily gonna see somebody, you know, not picking up their waste. I've also put actually bags in the squad car, so that excuse of I don't have a bag is, it's not good because we have them in our squad car, and we just hand them out, so if somebody doesn't have one. So, we're doing everything we can to curb that problem because we know that's an issue, but we do, we still get quite a bit of dog calls, and I don't think that will change.
All right. Yeah, yeah, chief, thanks for putting this together. I found it the one very useful and helpful. Many ways I wish I had a couple of years ago, so similar. You had mentioned those calling numbers, though. Are they in here?
The nine-on-one calls?
Yeah, the total call numbers.
Yeah, they're way at the bottom. If you see, if you look at the, the page three, you go down, so, so basically, it separates it by service, by, you know, all the way down to traffic, so if you go to the very bottom, we had two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-four calls. That totals all of our different calls, whether it's traffic, service, information, nine-one-one calls, crimes. Everything is, is kind of in that. In comparison to two thousand and nineteen, we had one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-six calls.
You don't have it in here?
Yeah, yeah, it's in here.
I don't either.
Okay.
I didn't see that in your report.
So it's not in there?
No. And this is the same as what we're putting.
No.
But I didn't see it on yours.
Did you see that one?
This is. It just says. Well, it's okay.
Okay, I will send that out. Thank you. So I have the original written right for you. Yeah, I will send that out. Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
All right, any other question? All right, thank you very much, chief.
No problem.
General business. Number one, discussion and possible action regarding the concept plan for twenty-one hundred American Legion Drive.
Okay, so you have a bunch of screen here. And it was part of your packet. Middle by Tom Crocker in regards to redevelopment of twenty-one hundred American Legion Drive. They are proposing a multi-use facility here. Is on the main floor. To the on the top floor here, it's have a B and B to allow up to six people to rent. The main floor will be an assembly space. And bottom floor will be a service space for different offices. Part of the, the recommendation from the commission, there was a discussion in regards to parking spots off, off, off-site parking, excuse me, off-street parking. And they were able to accomplish street parking stalls. As you can see, they were, yeah, okay, where they are here, at the back of the building. And the, or. Do you have Tom for access on Zoom here with us? And I just want to dive into the detail of the project. What we're looking for here is a thumbs up or thumbs down by the board for instruction for Mr. Crocker. For resolve this problem. Tom, do you hear me? Do you unmute yourself and you like?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yep. Did you, did you want me to say anything, or are there questions, or?
Is there anything that Bill left off that you'd like us to hear?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Is there anything Bill kind of gave a summary, or anything you would like to add to his comments?
No, I think the summary is, is what we presented last time as, and as well as the images, so I think I think I don't really have anything to add.
Okay, now, any, okay, Bill?
Hey, Tom, I got a couple of questions for you.
Here.
So, is the, so this is one of the oldest buildings in the village, correct?
From what I understand, I believe so, yes.
Is it, is it a historical, is it a historical landmark with the?
I mean, it has not been considered that in any type of legal sense. I mean, it is because it was built in the late eighteen-fifties. But no, we aren't bonded by any of that.
Okay, that's, just, just checking on that, and then are you going to change the facade at all, or are you, you're gonna leave that the same?
When you said the facade, you mean the, the top up there?
Well, the whole brick, you know, brick spacing and all that.
Sure, aside from some limited tuck pointing, I think we're gonna keep it the same. On the rim, like the actual roof itself is gonna be adjusted a little bit because of the, or like the the metal on, on the very top will be replaced, but it'll be put back in a similar manner. The windows will be replaced to represent pretty much the image you're looking at now. Yeah, so it'll, it'll be pretty much the same.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Tom? All right, do I have a motion?
So.
Second, second. All right, I have a motion in the second to approve the conceptual plan for twenty-one hundred American Legion Drive. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All whole thing, so move. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, discussion and possible action regarding North Hill Point jurisdictional transfer agreement. Have a motion?
Want a pre-letation on this first?
So we, I, I'd rather get a motion. I've already heard this a couple of times.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in the second to approve the North Hill Point jurisdictional transfer agreement. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, yeah, so this is a part of the negotiation with the town of Berry for jurisdiction, jurisdictional transfer for a corporate hotel type role. Yeah, right now, and on the stream, this portion that is highlighted here is in the town. And so and this is on the, the east side of the flat or pretty across the fences. And currently discussed, it was important for a sale to have this be a part of the open because what we had wanted to do was that the developer construct this road as part of development the whole way instead of cutting it short. And also the jurisdictional transfer would also provide those opportunities to work and repair and start reconstruct that road into. So as part of that negotiation and having to go over to the town of Berry to review, they had requested this action of North, uh, Somalian Road right away, be needed over to the town in exchange for the jurisdiction of my, my role. For purposes of the plan, I understand a lot, and this will right away. But it does impact, you'll see later on the agenda, the overall plan. So I'm saying, so there's some additional items that the town had requested newly, they protect the town resident in this area here. And their driveway. Overall, we thought that was there. So town of Berry did approve this agreement at their most recent meeting, March sixteen. And so because of the change in the language, maybe so, our request for the town of Berry is being presented to the village board for.
All right, are there any questions?
All right, so. Michael? This is just a jurisdictional transfer, so they still own the land, under the property under this, because the town doesn't own the land, that they will load.
Correct, so technically, the property on our house, right away is the right to work the right away is the termship, so that would, that would be what we could acquire.
Right, is the jurisdictional transfer would maybe in the future sometime possibly get possession of the land under.
Correct, so general, generally, if say that town resident would, would want to annex in the future, we would request from, from that education to make that road.
For the village, correct?
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All whole thing, so move. Number three, we'll take one by one. This is discussion and possible action regarding labors from chapter eighty-three of the village code of ordinance. We'll start with A, which is section B three point nineteen B of municipal code for all the erosion, storm, water, drainage control plans to achieve ninety percent.
You want me to something on this, or did you want?
Yeah, I, I. Why don't you get on motion, and then we'll discuss again. Every development we've done this multiple times. So, do I have a motion? Town motion to pass a waiver for section A three point one nine B municipal code. I have a second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and go with discussion.
So this is a, in, in issue with our current ordinance, where we require hundred percent of infiltration of the state's requirement is ninety percent. My understanding, yeah. Reinforced by my discussion earlier today with that, the law just attorney that we are, we are only able to force this ninety percent of the case, right? This is a waiver on our code technically, so it does require entire ownership, which is six out of seven.
I personally think we should just change our ordinance at some point. I mean, we have this on every development at the time. Our ordinance should be compliant to the state statute, but anyways, that's beside the point, but any discussion or on this at all, we'll do roll call votes on me, so we know that we have a roll call. Any, any other discussion, okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yeah.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
All right, number B, or letter B from section eighty-three point eighty-three, so C of municipal code below the minimum lot width and minimum lot areas meet the requirements specified in chapter eighty-four from specific district. I have a motion. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the general lot width and minimum lot area meet requirements specified in chapter eighty-four for specific district. I have a second.
Say.
All right, I have a motion and second discussion. Question? Bill?
Why are we doing this?
If you look on the flat, you have smaller lots, and we can put smaller homes. Well, that's three.
So there are they, are there still single-family homes?
Yeah.
Got it explained.
Yeah, that's great.
So currently, our subdivision ordinance, chapter eighty-three requires that a minimum a minimum lot area of ninety-six hundred square feet. Yeah, the minimum width is the, the wide. It doesn't necessarily match our zone ordinance, and residential issue number five allows for family loss to be as well as seventy-two hundred square feet and sixty feet of the width. And so, when planning this at the initial stages, it was proposed that the, the plan would And so when planning this at the initial stages, um it was proposed that the the plan would be or be provided at single residential five. Uh which would be the most dense for residential, but it provides smaller lots or smaller homes, so that was. And why? The traditional ten of this plan. Provide our home rooms. So there's a there's a there's an inconsistency between uh with villagers subdivision ordinance. Uh and uh both this minimum or. Thanks uh.
Is your question, Bill?
Yep, thank you.
Hey, Michael. So that basically means that chapter eighty-three with the way that that zone is basically saying your zone for an SR four rather than an SR five is how it's written. Correct, right, correct.
The entry, what is saying that the entry point for all future residential under the some under the subdivision code is that comes in in a higher or less dense.
No, rather than being an SR five, currently intent was to have it be an SR four.
Right, well, I don't think that kind of that kind of need.
Right, but that's just what it says.
All right, any other questions?
Just a comment.
Sure.
Uh again. Um we should change our ordinance. If this is gonna be a thing.
I I know I agree, we we're trying to do as many as we can, you're gonna see more and more changes coming.
That's good.
Yeah, we haven't really updated element, we're out of compliance.
Okay.
But yeah, you're right, absolutely, this is another example. All right, let's do a roll call vote please.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustees Xander?
Yeah.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
No.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
All right, fails. I think we should table the rest of it, there is no sense to move that unless. So you have something different, but they'll have to redo all the.
So what, so there's a couple of things that uh procedurally that the dollars were at this point, you can consider uh. The two remaining very two remaining waivers, uh so that we understand what's direction, uh we would go on that. Would recommend that you table the discussion and action on the preliminary plan as these waivers will impact the preliminary plan. You may have a discussion on and action on development agreement itself. And number six in regards to annexing. The final plan does uh depend on the preliminary plan, so you will. What table there?
I think within one of them.
The mayor's sheriff's not here, he needs six.
This needs needs six of a whole order.
All right, well, let's uh go to number uh C uh from section eighty-three point seven nine. So the evidence code to allow the minimum right of way with of Angeles way to sixty feet. We have a motion.
Some more.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and second, let's go with discussion, Billy wants a brief.
Yeah, so this is a change in the memo, grow right away, uh our subdivision ordinance uh requires a minimum. Uh frankly, right away of sixty-six feet. Uh as you can see, our annuals wave, which is a stellar way of this flat, it requires sixty feet. Or just proposing sixty feet. And so again, I think discussing this uh early on, uh the requirements. For the for it to be uh sixty feet was considered, uh originally this was proposed at a private role. Uh yet lots decided at that time. It also provides the last for uh needed uh lot area, lot area uh as proposed up here.
Do the standard one is sixty-six, so it's sixty. You know, I guess it's the correct word. All right, any questions on this, Bill?
Could we put no parking at one side of the street?
That is already in uh development agreement.
Then I have no other questions.
Okay, all right, any other questions, Michael?
I have a question about the no parking on one side of the street and why that was done, considering that I mean the right of way is just moving down to sixty feet. But the size of the road is the exact same size as Loffenberg.
Okay, that we can discuss when we get to the total part agreement.
Cause that is.
Sound would be appropriate for this.
It is stated down, but I was just.
Yeah. Any others? All right, roll call vote.
Trustee Xander?
Yeah.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
All right, D from section eighty-three point seven nine sub B sub one. C of municipal code to allow the minimum radius of curvature on uh Conrad Drive to a hundred feet. Bill, oh wait, I'm just gonna move on for.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion in a second or discussion, Bill?
Yeah, so let's uh propose it for our uh some of our best feedback, a minimal uh radius here be one hundred feet and what we're talking about here. Other section of. So for for it to be a hundred twenty, it would stretch out, yeah, you would change the size of the lot. I'm going to thirty-seven and six, seven, nine. So that to um. Consider uh. Someone uh you don't want to watch your uh. Curators, the question, the developers have the question that.
Just so everybody knows, fire truck and big truck, Mr. Langfeller. All right, any other questions, Bill?
So two questions.
Sure.
Uh one is the. Is it gonna be no parking around that curve, so the fire trucks can make it around that, or they can make it if cars are parked around that curve?
I understand it may be the cars like that, but you wouldn't be able to park on that curve anyway. But that would be a no park, that would be a corner.
Yep.
So you're not allowed to park on that side.
Okay, and would it would would it make sense to make the speed limit twenty miles an hour around there with that curb being so tight?
I don't, I just don't think.
I I agree, the the probably won't, but I don't want cars flying around that and being a blind curve either, because people are gonna put. You know bushes and trees and whatnot on that lot thirty-seven.
All right.
And the house is gonna go there, so it's gonna be difficult to see around that turn, so if we could just slow traffic down, it's just a suggestion.
No, no, it's good suggestion, I'm not saying, I just don't know if this is the place that we would do.
Well, I think it should go to public safety.
Yes, that part, but this is a different thing.
Well, well, right, I but right, but I think they're kind of tied together-ish.
Well, if this doesn't pass, then there's no reason to talk about.
That's exactly right.
So so you might as well, we've gotta decide if we're gonna do it or not.
Well, I'm in, yeah, I'm in favor of it, I just wanted to see a soul of that one.
Right. Anybody else? All right, roll call vote.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yeah.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
All right. So number four, representation, we have a motion to table number four.
I make a motion to table the revised preliminary plat for pre-crossing.
I have a second. All right, all in, any discussion?
Excuse me, excuse me, if I may, President Langfeld, this is Vern Jesse, I'm legal counsel for Saint Francis.
Go ahead, Vern.
Okay, I I just have a question, it happened so quickly, what what is the reason why the plat is being uh tabled?
Well, because the uh waiver for your lot size was not approved. So, I mean, the ones that are underneath the ninety-six, which I believe is probably eighty percent of them.
And and did I hear someone say that requires a super majority or something to grant that waiver?
It requires a three forty four, correct, and we have one person missing and we have one noble, you have to use the the five hole to meet six.
Was this issue before the the board, when the preliminary, when the original preliminary plat came through? Because nothing's changed other than the the minor issue that we talked about earlier with the North Hill Point Road issue, so I'm wondering why we have a problem now.
Yeah, the waiver, the waiver was not not yet considered, right?
The the waiver was not considered when the preliminary plat first came through?
Yeah, we didn't have a request to consider that waiver at that point. And through the review of of uh the facts here, uh. We knew that the waivers were something that needed to be considered, that it was for prior to.
But the lot sizes haven't changed from the initial preliminary plat to this one, have they?
They have not.
So it was, so the lot size was.
But but I I think there was, I I have to go back and check the record, but I don't think the preliminary plat had unanimous, uh boy, I think there were some no balls on it. I'd have to check, my I believe it's past five two.
This is extraordinarily disappointing to get hung up on this at at this stage, when when we had to come back because of the North Hill Point Road issue.
Yeah, I I mean, like you said, we uh we could try to work it out um by the next week.
Can I say something, Jim?
Go ahead, Michael.
Can I, I know we're in the middle of a motion, but I'd like to reconsider my vote on that, as I was confused by the number of people required for that vote. Thought it was only a seventy-five percent.
It is seventy-five percent.
Yeah, but I thought of quorum, not of entire body.
Um, well, we can table this motion. And we can bring B back for reconsideration, I think you're allowed to do that.
We can vote down this motion.
You can certainly do a motion to reconsider, but we should have some clarification about what the actual vote is required, Paul is it, Paul is on the line, correct?
We could, we could vote down.
Paul's not, Paul's not on the line, say.
Okay, because I always thought it was seventy-five percent of those present, but, okay.
All right, so um let's. I don't want to present, we have to reconsider, let's just table this motion.
Well, there's a motion, there's a motion, we have approved the motion. Right, so it's a it's a motion and it's been seconded, so it's on the table, we're at the discussion. Right, we can vote it down.
Okay.
And then raise it back. Correct.
We vote it down and then we bring back B and then we.
Then we come back to the.
All right, all right. There was anything we can build, are you sure you want it, perfect?
Yeah, I wanna come to this.
We have this.
Oh, yeah.
I I we had this discussion with Paul.
Yeah, so section eighty, so section eighty-three, I mean, let me show this. So under uh section eighty-three point one two zero, various waivers in our subdivision ordinance. Uh sub two, it requires a three four affirmative ball, the term of our support for to grant variance or a waiver in this section. And it does not defer to any pain, a difference between that variance or a waiver.
All right, everybody comfortable, so just so we know, we're going to uh vote on a preliminary plat motion. All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same, all right, all right, just voted down. We will reconsider free beam. Which is uh section eighty-three point eighty-three sub C of municipal code, so all minimum lot width and minimum lot area meet the requirement specified in chapter eighty-five. Pacific and going district, I have a motion.
So moved.
I have a second, second. All right, do we have any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yeah.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
Sorry, all right, we will go back to number four, we have a motion to. To approve the regard on our class for pre-crossing at Saint Francis.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for pre-crossing at Saint Francis.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second discussion. All right, let's do uh, let's do a roll call vote.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yeah.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yeah.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
All moves, all right, number five, we're at a discussion and optional action regarding the development agreement with pre-crossing at Saint Francis, I have a motion. I have a motion to approve the development agreement for pre-crossing at Saint Francis. We have a second. And a motion in the second, we're at discussion, so let's talk about the one item, is uh no parking. Are you here, can you pull up that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm. Talking about parking along uh.
Yeah, I was looking for the map, that's all right, okay, what what basically it states is that there's no parking on the south side of the street. I personally think that uh I would put it to, if we're gonna have no parking, I think it should be on the north side along lot fifty-six. Otherwise, everybody, because I think houses are probably gonna have residents and then and they'll have to park their car and always cross the road, I think that's dangerous. Lot fifty-six, most likely, there's a good chance that that'll have off-street parking, because it's multi-family. So I think it's safer to put it on the north side of that road instead of the south side, there's no driveways, so. You know, right now, uh. No one's gonna be crossing if you have to the road, I think. A kid's daughter, when they get out of the car, they're gonna run across the road to get home, and I just think we should allow parking in front of it. But that would be my recommend, we change it from south to north. Michael?
My recommendation is to allow parking on both sides of the street, just for the reason I gave before. Although the right of way is sixty feet and not sixty-six, the size of that road, if you look at the construction plans, is twenty-eight feet wide with two feet of curb and six inches of gutter. It's the exact same size as what's gonna be on Loffenberg and what's gonna be on Tyler. The street isn't smaller, it's just the right of way is not is not sixty-six feet, street's the same size as the other ones. So why, we are considering no parking on those other streets.
Bill?
The only the only time that will become an issue is if in the future you wanna expand, then you have to deal with parking at that time. But Michael's right, that the road would would be somewhere.
All right.
It's it's not in there.
I I I don't mind more cars you park, the less speed there's gonna be. So.
The other common idea is is that uh parking is controlled by ordinance of the village, so potentially you could make this out and consider parking regulations there over time.
Sure.
Right, exactly.
So um I'm comfortable with uh eliminating eliminating that uh requirement, what are the people feeling?
I agree with Michael's. I have nothing on those sides. I already told them.
Bill? I see how busy, I mean, well, plus you know, the park over, you know, by hill ran, there's a lot of cars, a lot of traffic. And a lot of kids, and I don't know, if you have a smaller home, probably, you know, more family-oriented houses at this point. I, I'm still concerned about the, the, having two cars parked side by side and two cars trying to get by. I would prefer to see no parking on the north side. That's just my.
Rudy?
I'm just trying to figure it out. But do you think you will have to, because like those lots are smaller, you know, and you're gonna have the driveways. So I don't think that we will do two cars per lot, honestly. So if one's for the driveway and the car, probably won't be able to do two cars side by side. The lots are small?
No, she was very sorry about those sizes.
Oh, on each side, it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This way.
No, no, no.
Okay, okay.
Oh, this is cool.
Okay. I'm doing this one, Michael, this is a rule, okay?
All right, what's the, Kevin, I would just leave it out of the agreement, we'll deal with it via ordinance as we have it. All right, so I have a, a motion and a second. So I think we'll have to, uh. Well, if the vote is on and add that, do the motion with that.
We can just amend this motion.
And we don't know why we have a chapter two anymore. I think we eliminated it in chapter two. So I think we need friendly amendments anymore.
Well, there is, there's, there's a friendly amendment and a, and an amendment.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, very good, I hear you, yeah, thank you. So do I have a motion, amended, motion to remove the parking restriction?
I'll make an, an amended motion?
Yeah.
I'll make an amended motion to remove the parking restriction on Angeles Way.
Second, all right, I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same?
Aye.
All right. So that has been now added to the original amendment. So now we're voting on the development agreement for pre-crossing at St. Francis with that new, uh, moving of the parking restriction. So let's do a roll call vote.
I have a question.
Michael?
I just had a question, wanted a clarification on the water main and piping, when it talks about the developers selling tenants, then, is this? So it says the developer and the municipality's land is a cost recovery agreement that will find the municipalities' obligation to, to reimburse the developers. Page one sixty-two. What is, is that yet to be determined? Or what, is it, was that one of the things that was to be determined?
Correct, yeah, so that and the impact these agreements is, is up to be, uh. It's still currently being negotiated, and, and I think, uh, I think they're pretty close on that. But essentially, for, oh, for example, what, uh. What we did for scenic valley is that, you know, developer paid for the upgraded cost and that any future developers that would have got, uh, could be a first one for that. So I think Burke can actually talk more about that as to where they are on that association, but I think we're perfect.
Yeah, so that's not finalized, so, and then I'll come back to the board.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yeah.
Trustee Calvater.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. We're six, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance that annexed land to the village across plains, pre-crossing at St. Francis. Put a motion.
So moved.
Right, a second. A motion and a second. Uh, to approve the ordinance regarding the annex land to those across plains, pre-crossing discussion. I'm gonna say something.
Well, this, so this, this one requires five out of seven to approve this.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Michael?
With. Trying to make sure I'm in the right spot, um. With the annexation, with us not getting the grant for the stormwater mitigation, is the land on the other side of P still being annexed into the village? Or it's all part of this?
It's all part of the plat, so if you, you know, so I, I did a test agreement that we had pre-crossing, or with the Xander's previous.
Right.
Uh, and so it said, you know, either, you know, if we got, if we received a grant prior to the, the plat being approved, then we would essentially purchase or acquire property. And if the plat came before, that this would be a part of the plat.
Okay, that was my clear, I was, when I was reading that, I saw the thing about the grant and, like, okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee Calvater.
Yes.
Trustee Xander. President Langfeld.
Yes. We're starting a discussion, discussion and possible action regarding final plat map for pre-crossing at St. Francis. Put a motion.
I want to approve the final plat map for pre-crossing at St. Francis.
All right, a motion and a second, we're at discussion. Bill, you wanna say anything?
Uh, just that, as part of your package, I did include all this, though, items that we are still working on regarding sea and construction plan. Understand that generally at this point, there, we're not a hundred percent yet of that, or, oh, so there's still some details that. Will need to be determined, uh, we do have a recommendation from Brian, Burke, who's our village engineer. Saying that, uh, a single condition of resolving all the comments on construction plans.
Okay, help me out, I thought the construction document was separate document.
It is a separate document.
So you're asking to attach the construction document to the final plat?
No. That is a condition of approving the plat, but we've reached, like we did with the ball for a high, uh, construction.
Yeah, it just, can someone go ahead and do a, can they go ahead?
Yeah.
Another construction plan, if they have a final plat? Doesn't the, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out how, if they're, if they're tied together at that time, but I thought they were separate documents, so why are we tying one to the other?
So, so they're, they're technically separate documents. What generally, what we, we generally do is we approve the final plat, we don't sign off on, or we don't allow them to start construction at those times. And so between now and construction start sometime in summer, we have that, that time to work through those specific parameters. But what it does is it, it states that, that we need to get through those construction plans.
Bill? Why don't we hold off on approving this until that gets resolved? I mean, or, or does that hold up everything if we don't approve it tonight?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that out too, I, I just don't.
Yeah, so, I think Brian maybe explained that a little bit better than me, where they are on the, uh, construction plans and how that plays with a, a final plat here.
Sure, thanks, Bill. Uh, to, to answer the first question from Jay, certainly are separate documents, the village and, and most municipalities. Provide an approval of the final plat conditioned upon one or a dozen things. Uh, sometimes it's, you know, coming to agreement about parkman fees or coming to an agreement on road maintenance or some clause in the developer's agreement. Uh, the idea is, at this point. Final plat approval is a really important thing to the developer. And it can hold up everything from obviously construction to financing on their side to lots, future lot sales and what have you. So often developers, and I, I would defer to this developer if it's different, but they would like to get a, an approval, conditional approval from the board. Right about now-ish in the process so that they know they've got X number of things to take care of before they can break ground. If, um, if unconditional approval is provided by the board tonight. It's one, one large step, uh, one large carrot that the village kind of just gives up in its ability to make sure they get the construction plans they. Need, and that they get the developer's agreement they need. So it, it's often done and historically has been done this way in cross plains as well, is that it's. Approved contingent upon one or X number of things, the construction plans being one of them. Uh, the plans themselves, you know, they're very close. Uh, there are a number of items that just won't, aren't done right now, uh, primarily related to the stormwater management and getting the DNR approvals that are necessary there. Related to your cold water fisheries immediately downstream. Uh, and down to just minutia of, of things we're working with Michael earlier today on. You know, all the shoulders are gonna look and, and correcting the note about the interior of the roundabout, so. Uh, the historical practice has been the, the board delegates that. That being plans to staff and any other specific comments that board members are concerned about. So that we don't have to come back to the board for small changes to plan, which are pretty common. Uh, it's, in scenic valley, for example, tweaks and modifications were made right up till the week before construction began. So the idea is that it, if there's major issues on the plat, the board can say, hey, I don't, I'm gonna condition my approval on X, Y, or Z. And then that allows staff and the developer to, to keep the ball rolling without waiting for the next board meeting to hash it out.
And Brian, this is Jeff Lee, uh, with the development team, uh, and we definitely agree with Brian's, uh, summary on why we'd like to get plat approval tonight. But, uh, Brian, could you, you, perhaps, uh, uh, share with the folks? You know, we, we've gone through numerous rounds of, you provide us comments, we've, we address all the comments, we submit the plans. Things continue to come up, but we are, we are well into that review process. And from our perspective, uh, we are, uh, you know, looking to work with staff to, uh, you know, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. And, and get the plans, uh, complete and accurate, but I think we are. Frank can share his opinion, but I think we're really far along in that process with, with relatively few open items.
Absolutely agree, yeah, I would, I'd say the plans are probably ninety-five percent complete. Uh, there's some of them are, are honestly just typos, you know, stuff that we wanna make sure gets corrected before it gets officially finalized. Other items are, are just getting some more detail, uh, and again, in particular here, I'm gonna pick on those stormwater ponds. Uh, making sure that the stormwater management both satisfies the village ordinance, but also. Addresses the DNR concerns and, and needs on. Two different factions of the DNR, one for stormwater management and one for trout fisheries, uh, that are, are not necessarily always aligned. So, uh, just working with those folks, but it, it's, they are very close, we've, they've been very responsive in addressing comments, I concur.
Hey, so I guess we're gonna need another amendment to the. So let's, before we do that, let's just do amendment, what are the conditions? I, there's three of them in the recommendation.
Yeah, so the first one would be, uh, out of those approval of, uh, street construction plants.
What page is this on, Bill? What's it?
Two, three.
None of them, it's on order.
So.
Uh, approval of, uh, competitive agreement, uh, in this coincide with the villages', uh, discussion, uh, impact, why, and, and. Then, uh, create the approval by possible. Those items are still, particularly still.
Well, can I have, I just wanna go with amendment to the original amendment.
I'll make an amendment to the original motion that includes. The approval is a final by condition on village approval of street construction plans. Approval of impact fee agreement and approval of cost recovery.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye, discussion.
So there's nothing else that we need to put on the table here that we need, these are the only three things.
Correct, the other items are to place their, uh, set up costs, yeah, well.
Okay.
And it sounds like they're gonna change that circle of planting, so I don't need to tack that on.
Correct, yeah, the village engineer, Jerry, myself, and the developer all understand that.
Okay, I won't tack that on, that sounds great.
All right, any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Now we have that language in the original, uh, motion to approve the final plat map for pre-crossing at St. Francis. Roll call vote.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee Calvater.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. All right, here it is. So we are number eight. So, discussion and possible action regarding the village municipal stormwater MS four permit. Is this something we have to approve?
Yeah, I'll let Brian agree with that. Bye, bye.
Yes, um, so this is the annual, the village's annual MS four permits of mill. Uh, that's a mouthful of an acronym and for municipal separate storm sewer system. Uh, there are a few dozen municipalities in the state that are classified as, as an MS four. This, you're one of them. The permit is similar to what a facility would get for an industrial discharge to waters of the state. Or your treatment plant for water to the state, those allow you to discharge water with certain conditions on it. For wastewater and industrial water, there are all sorts of chemical limits, temperature limits, those sorts of things. For stormwater, it comes down to total suspended solids, TSS. I, and those are limited to communities that are either over ten thousand people. Touching a community that's over ten thousand people, or in your case, adjacent to a very sensitive. Water of the state, Blackard Creek, in this case, of course. Uh, so what you're bound to do is show that you are removing total suspended solids from your stormwater runoff. To at least twenty percent compared to no controls whatsoever. You submit this report each year, not only documenting that you're taking care of the stormwater ponds, the stormwater infiltration areas, the stormwater swales. Uh, that allow you to remove those particulate before it reaches the creek. But also, uh, requires tracking of a, a large number of items that Jerry and his staff take care of. Everything from tons of road salt used to how many loads of leaves get picked up to how many inlets get cleaned out every year. Jerry and his guys have to inspect every storm sewer outfall to make sure they're not seeing, you know, oil sheen, those sorts of things on the water. So this report simply documents all that. And shows the state that the village is, is doing what's required in its permit. It's a fairly lengthy. Uh it's a fairly lengthy document, of course. Uh one of the requirements uh is that it be presented for question at the board meeting. Uh which is is tonight. For some of the longer serving board members, you may remember the year before and the year before. Uh this comes up every March, so this is a third go around of that effort.
All right, thank you. We have a motion.
A motion to approve the village's municipal stormwater MS four permit.
Wait a second. All right, I have a motion, second discussion. Question, Michael.
Uh yeah, I just wanna say, just in terms with uh the deicing salt products. Hopefully in the future, we can use less of that. I know there's a lot of training available for municipal workers that's going on to try to get salt usage down on roads. So that it doesn't run off the creeks and stuff. There's a lot of programs out there right now. Uh I thought I read that training didn't happen because of COVID, hopefully next year we can do something.
Hey, anybody else? All right, motion and. Second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All whole same, so move. All right, number nine, discussion and possible action regarding chapter two of the village board ordinance. This is the last step of our discussion uh uh meeting. Uh number of numbers drawn out last time. Were ruled on and focus debate, I wanna read what I believe is what. Um was deemed to hold. In a debate, each member has the right to speak twice on the same question. On the same day, but cannot make a second speech on the same question so long as any member who has not spoken. On that question desires for. The member who has spoken twice on a particular question on the same day has exhausted. His rights to debate that question for that day. I believe that's what you were referring to, Kevin. So. That is uh called, I guess I'd like to hear what people's feelings are on that. Michael.
My question is, what is the definition of question inside of that? Is that per motion or is that, I mean, what what does that mean?
That's that motion. Once you have a motion and a second.
So then it's two times.
Two times, yeah.
So then, another, if there's an amended motion, do you get two questions inside the amended motion? And then if it bounces out and you've used one, you only have one more after.
No, you get two for each motion.
Okay, whatever, right, but. Over.
Yeah, no. People's feeling. All right, Judy.
Personally, I think they could hurt us as far as being a good conversation and have good. Like, cause I learn, I like like people's questions, cause sometimes when I come in, I think anyone, I feel, but then like I hear different debates and I feel like, oh wow, they changed my mind. So I like the conversation, I I because I I learn more. So I don't know if to to, I'll learn enough and to kind of wrong to that. I mean, I think it, we went through meetings, but I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Bill?
I know, I know. So. Thanks for anticipating. So I I I I agree with Judy because it does spur and it has changed my mind in in some cases, but. We are also dragging these meetings on for so long. Reiterating the same things over and over and over and over over again. And and that's, that's what we need to try to subside, right? So you know, what I would recommend, and I don't know how you do this, how you, how you facilitate this, but. Oh, you know, I come with questions to a meeting that I have, right? I I highlighted in my book and I have it, so when I come, I know what the questions are now. Michael or Lori or or Kevin or somebody may or Judy may come up and and say something, you know, or one of the people that members may come. And may spur something that I didn't think about, right? So I don't wanna be limited to two, but I do want to keep the meetings going and and ask all my questions all at the same time. And then move on to the next person. I think what I would like to see is. Is kinda go through, you know, Judy, do you have any questions? Lori, Michael, and go through the list around rather than. I say something, Michael responds to it. When you say something, Michael responds to it. Kevin says something, you respond to it, you know, and that kind of. Keeping it organized in a sense where we're focused on on the question and what kind of response we're getting. Let everyone kind of talk and get their thoughts out before we go back and back and back and back to other people. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I exactly know what you mean. Yeah. Michael.
I'll say I agree with Judy. I like a more conversational meeting where ideas can be expressed, you can learn things, you can bounce them up. Understand what Bill's saying also. You just have to be careful during your time when you're talking, that's just not endless and rambling and you have points to be made and then you step back. I think you keep ourselves in check that way and meetings won't become extravagantly long.
All right, Laura, I know you're leaving us, but you've been here for two years, so your thoughts?
Um, I like the discussion and I think if you limit it to some day. Um the subject, how much, I mean, I limit to a subject that might be um, you know, will might be debating that. Um, I think it does bring up more questions. I think you might limit. The knowledge that others can give you, like.
Kevin?
Yeah, I wanna clarify that that is after a motion, that is the two, the two questions, the two speaking congress on that issue. Would happen after the motion. I think it was plenty of time to prepare. We often will, they make a better service. Uh you have that discussion before motions introduced as well, uh especially on a more complex topic. And so I'm supportive, but I I can hear that it's not gonna happen, so I'm going to suggest that what what Bill just said to my left here. Uh and then to be conscious of ourselves and then Jay as the the president's um, which I think you've been Jay the last two meetings, thank you. Uh you pull this back in with that, I'll I'll kill it. And so I think if that happens, uh let's see where it goes.
All right. Judy?
That's a good question. Can we still do follow? I know how many questions, can we still follow question?
You have, but there. Yes, you can. He answers you, but you can use it as a block to avoid other people. All right, um so I guess we'll just, we're gonna go ahead and continue. We'll all try to do discipline and I'll sort of maybe try to step in on. When he's staff, try to bring this back. So, oh, Bill?
So one thing I would recommend is, I know, well, I think, Bill, you do a new trustee or repatient.
You want me to go on this here?
Yep, so I think that is a good time to bring this subject up to the new trustees.
I think that is a very good idea and we're talking about also having kind of a retreat with the board and department head. I think that, yeah, 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 we have, we've talked about that, so it's a good idea. All right, we're gonna go now to consent. Item consent agenda, item ten, that's the streetlight policy. Silver hold it.
So I know. Uh this is on, just in case you're curious. Page seventy-seven. Now, I know that we talked about it at the last meeting and we and we asked for it to go to plan. And and I'm assuming it went to plan.
Went to plan.
But did, so my question about this is the plan come up with anything different or do they approve it as it was written or was there, what was the discussion about?
They approved it and it was written and I can do it now.
Okay.
All right, I don't know if we can, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, uh I believe it was the man's plan was, I don't, do we make, was it one minor change?
No, uh Randy just had a question on the poll. What was?
Yeah, and that, I noticed that the the plant producer proved it not made the the memo. It says the staff are.
Right, oh, right.
But yes, they they have.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the streetlight. Policy.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All whole same. Uh next consent agenda, item hold was number fourteen. Uh and I suppose you wanna know what that's all about?
Well, there's a couple things in there.
Bill will be able to, yeah, this is.
Yeah, so I mean, I, so I I read, I read the the notes in the packet and the notes. Um talked about including commercial into this zoning. And I and I saw that within the zoning, but I also saw things in there that are. Not necessarily commercial only, like, you know, increasing the the penalties from five hundred to a thousand. I don't wanna just put that out there for consent. That's something I want us to have a discussion on and talk about fees and fines and. You know, what's get, what's gonna go cost the residents and I also had some other issues. But I'll let Bill talk about anything else he wants to talk about for you to want.
Yeah, so the intent of us was bring our code up to our current practice, but primarily uh. Does worry some on the commercial side. Uh so we've we've been conducting. Inspections and so our code doesn't satisfy that. The rest of the the language regards to. The uniform dwelling code or on the residential side uh is updated language that uh that Paul was necessary that did us a.
So. Michael, Bill, what were you just speaking about specifically about fees going from five hundred to a thousand? Where were you?
So if you look back in penalties toward the end of the memo or the end of the chapter.
Is there a page number?
I'm looking.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and if you look at, if you look at, yeah, uh three, thirty-one point fourteen B. Penalties is forfeit nulls and twenty-five dollars, no more than one thousand dollars for each day of non-compliance. It was five hundred dollars. And that seemed to me a pretty drastic jump. Um if you're trying to throw a thousand dollars in there for commercial. You, but you're also including residential in there. You're not distinguishing it between commercial residential that fine. You're just saying between twenty-five and a thousand dollars from twenty-five to fifty, uh five hundred dollars. And that seemed, again, something I'd like to have a discussion about. What was the reason for that?
I'm guessing it's following speaks there. I'm just just speculating usually on those fine, but you, if you know, bottom is twenty-five.
The bottom is twenty-five, right? Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where the one thousand dollars came from uh in regards to the cost of prosecution. I imagine that that has to do with getting the the consideration side, I mean, the commercial side into this. And and providing that flexibility to adjust anywhere between twenty-five and a thousand.
So who, where did this language come from? Where did it originally?
Paul Paul.
Okay.
It all, I have one other area. Okay, so on page one oh three, uh section thirty-one oh five. It defines. Uh what a permit is needed for. And. Uh. One in C, in 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 paragraph C, it says alterations to the structures. Heating, electrical or plumbing system, and oh, that's not the one. Oh, D, sorry. Replacement of major building equipment, including furnaces, central air conditioners, water heaters and other major pieces of equipment. So if I have a water heater go out and I replace it for a like to like, I thought that didn't need a permit for that.
I I, that's what was mine, but I.
Yeah, so right now we do, we do actually permits for that, for replacement of water here versus um like for like equipment. Um, you know, it's a minimal fee, but still required.
But Bill, I thought, I, cause I remember this.
We had this discussion.
We decided that we go with the permit, but there wouldn't be a cost. Cause I think the idea of having that is you gotta make sure it meets compliance.
Inspection.
Yeah, I think you need to have that notification. But I do remember the discussion where I thought a lot of all we were gonna go with all the heat. But.
Can you reference, you know, when approximately that was?
The last time Bill and I were on the board and we started to bring the committee back.
I was just saying, I think Tracy charges the village for that, so we're just gonna take a loss every time someone replaces something.
He go, he goes and checks on all these.
I think that's why we charge a fee is because he inspects them.
I thought he, I thought he only did inspections if there was something done, the structure or you opened up. I thought when we replaced the road siding, these pieces that he did that and we would not.
And on roof inside, yeah, he doesn't check, but I wanna.
So I think there, I think there are enough questions here that we can look into this.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's fine, I mean, no.
Yeah, yeah, if you could look into it, I would, I would appreciate that.
Originally, this was not to get into that doubt, so we weren't, we just wanted to get us covered for the party. Cause it was right when we were laughing.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of.
Well, there's other things you wanna talk about, that's fine, uh but that's why this came up was just to get us covered with merch, it's right out. So we'll move that uh to a future.
So can I just make a motion that we that we uh table the adopt and the ordinance to repeal and recreate chapter thirty-one to a future?
Yeah.
That's a motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Us.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All whole same, so move to your agenda item. Yeah, yeah, I, but again, I I just. I gotta balance that here, so.
I know.
It, that is on our mind, but I figured that discussion would be far better to have when we have the new board in place versus. Before now, right? The program for reactional was potentially up to three new members, so. Uh yeah, uh I mean, that is, Bill and I have that on one of our future ones. We try to go three months out, so that's on. Anything else, Judy?
And I'm just carving, so it lines us out for the future and that.
Carrying.
Um, then we need carving, we need, I mean, Kevin had a committee going for a carving.
Okay. Um, I was gonna say the same one, sorry. All right. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to go go into full discussion?
I will second that.
All right, we'll call both.
Trustee Kettlebaiter.
Yeah.
Trustee Brochus.
Yeah.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yeah.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yeah.
All whole same. All right, we're in open session. I don't think there's, oh, yeah. Thank you, Michael. Open question. All right, I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Motion adjourned?
Oh, Laura.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here's.
What do you got for time, Jay? I don't have a clock.
I have. Eight twenty-six.